Please rise to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual liberties, and justice for all.
At this time, the clerk will call the roll of the members.
Councilor Cooperrow.
Here.
Councilor Garcia.
Which one?
Tenere. Yep.
Here.
Councilor Robinson.
Here.
Councilor Taylor.
Here.
Councilor Lopez.
Here.
Councilor Regu Maldonado.
Present.
Councilor Vidal.
Here.
Councilor Brown.
Here.
Councilor Vito.
Present.
Councilor De Jesus.
Present.
Councilor Judith Garcia.
Present.
School committee members. El Faro.
Ms. Enya Faro. Not here.
Shauna Reagan.
Here.
Anna Hernandez.
Here.
Naomi Zabit.
Present.
Kelly Garcia.
Present.
Jennifer Lez.
Present.
Ann Labruto Rivera.
Present.
Thank you. At this time, as viewers may have noticed, we have many more members here in front. This is a joint session of the school committee and the city council to interview and nominate the vacancies of the school committee districts for District Four and District Five. At this time, we're going to, part of the process is to interview the candidates and we're going to do district. Oh, I'm sorry. I need a motion to accept the call of the meeting. Council Robinson makes a motion to accept the call of the meeting on the suspension. We're going to do the interview of the candidates. The first to call will be the candidate for District Four. And that individual is Clarianjelis Covas Caraballo. From 22 Garrish Ave, Chelsea, Mass. Yes. Sure, as Ms. Covas makes her way into the chambers, I'll briefly explain so that the viewers and the voters of Chelsea understand what is happening here tonight. There were two district, school committee district races that did not elect a school committee member. Per the charter, once the city council is notified of the vacancy, it is up to the city council to call a joint session with the school committee members, the remaining seven in this case, to host or hold a joint committee so that we can appoint the position from any candidates that submit their resume with a letter of interest. The city council and the school committee received three candidates for the two open positions. One candidate for District Four, who are about to begin to ask questions and interview, and two candidates for District Five, that the public will later meet. So, all that being said, I will let my colleagues and my elected officials from the other side of the aisle on the school committee get prepared. We're going to ask committee and we're going to allow the school committee members first to ask questions of Ms. Clarice Covas. And then after that, we'll allow the city councillors to ask questions. I'll turn this, at this moment, to my fellow president of the school committee, Ms. Kelly Garcia.
Question about procedure. With respect to District Five, I'm just wondering what the charter states? Because I know that there was a write-in candidate for that. Is there a specific threshold that they were supposed to have met? And if so, what is that threshold? How do we land here today with an open seat in District Five when there was a write-in campaign?
Thankfully, our city solicitor is here and she will respond.
So the city clerk declared that the seat was vacant in District Five. I'm trying to remember District Five. Was that, um, um, school committee, Henry? He won the election. The second place runner did not get 20% of the vote. So when January 1st came, he chose not to take the seat. We had a vacancy in the office.
Where if it had been the other way, where it was a complete vacancy and only one person running and they got two people to write in their names?
They would've won.
Got it. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, city solicitor.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Regu Neda. Already, team, so we have in front of us one candidate. Thank you. For those watching at home, thank you for joining this special joint meeting. I'm Kelly Garcia and I'm the president of the Chelsea School Committee. I'd like to turn it over to the school committee to start with questions. So if there are any members, please raise your hand so I can call on you. Mr. Jimenez, start us off, please.
Hi. Thank you so much for joining us and for applying to join us on the school committee. I guess, you know, really, I would love to hear more about your story, how you came to be with us here, and what drew you to apply to this position.
Well, my name is Clarianjelis Covas Caraballo, if you must know. It's the full document name. And basically, I came here because when you say when I came here, are you specifically saying what brought me to Chelsea or what brought me to the school committee in general?
Yeah, just in general, you know, like, tell us more about who you are. Just want to get to know you, you know, especially as, hopefully somebody who will be your colleague soon. Just want to, you know, get to know who you are. Yeah, just, not a trick question at all.
Of course, perfect. So I came here when I was in second grade. So I'm not going to date myself because I know that you guys happen to like to do that. But let's just say that it was, second grade was in what was called the old shirtless school. My mom, we came from Puerto Rico. I grew up in Chelsea. I went through the Chelsea Public School System from second grade all the way up to high school. And my son is now going to be enrolling in kindergarten in what is no longer the shirtless school. It's now the early learning center. So if I'm being completely transparent, that is part of the main reason. My eldest son will be there this upcoming fall and then my youngest son will be there the following fall. So my biggest reason for wanting to be part of the school committee or be in the seat is so that I can have a voice and be kind of a little bit of a bridge, if you will, between the parents and what's going on within the school system. I know that there's a lot of, I mean, I watched the last committee meeting and I learned so much. There's so much behind the scenes work that's already being done that is absolutely not even really in the peripheral vision of most people. Most people think that kids just get up, they go to school, and that's what happens. There's so much behind the scenes work that you guys are doing that it's incredible. And me personally, as a parent, I don't want to go ahead and say I'm going to end up being a helicopter mom, but knowing and being involved within that process is going to definitely alleviate some of the pressure and the stress that's going to be coming up in the fall. And I'm sure a lot of parents would be able to vocalize that if they had the time or if they were able to join or if they tried to become a little bit more active. So if it wasn't here, I was gonna, you guys were gonna see me no matter what because I'm going to be that person, so. Definitely.
Thank you. Does that answer your question? Yeah, definitely. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Clari. Ms. Lez?
Hi, welcome.
Hello.
Like you, I got into school committee through an interview and here I am 10 years later, so. So one of our biggest push is family and community engagement. We've been working very hard to make sure that the community is well aware of what's going on in the schools and engaging parents. Do you have any techniques that maybe you could bring to try to engage more parents? It's been great, but it could be greater because, you know, seeing the demographics that we have in the city, unfortunately, we don't get as much as involvement as we would like. So do you have any strategies that?
Well, Ms. Lez, I think the biggest thing, in my opinion, is a lot of people are unaware of the work that you guys do. So I think first and foremost, that needs to be addressed. Whether it's, you guys are, you have a lot of teachers that are working with you. I thought it was amazing how some of them even stepped up as advocates for their students. I think that helps the student-teacher relationship. I think that students knowing that, yes, it's not just mom and dad or mom and mom or dad and dad, whatever their caregiver, whatever their at-home structure is going to be coming up to bat. I think that once people start to see that the bigger picture really is, that it takes a village, it's a done deal. Because parents do want to know, especially right now, you guys mentioned that with the coronavirus protocol, everything has been shifting so quickly and you guys have been able to adapt and the school systems have been able to adapt. And I think it's honorously commendable how quickly both the parents and the children themselves have been so resilient. The teachers have also done their part and you guys have been able to do that. A lot of the parents think, again, it starts at drop-off and pick-up and then everything else is just kind of like a big snowball situation. So my biggest technique is going to be to advocate and voice the fact that, listen, if you don't like what's going on, you have a voice and you need to start using it. These are your avenues. These are your tools. Help us, help you, help us. That's simple. Like, because nobody's going to get anything done from a seat or from just standing by in the corner giving negative remarks or not being involved. You have to, when it comes to children, you have to get your hands dirty. That's it. That's my biggest, I guess, technique, if you will.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hernandez?
Hello. Speaking to that same topic, I think that we've been, I mean, it's 13 years for me and I think that was my biggest concern coming in. And we have tried pretty much everything that we can think of to communicate with the parents and involve the parents and it's been the biggest, the biggest problem and we seem to be sometimes at a standstill. And maybe we've tried speaking to parents, we've tried communicating with them, we've tried, every form of communication, I think, has come to our minds, how to communicate with parents and still, like you, it's not just drop off the child and pick it up and, you know, they raise it for you. But it's, I think we need, this year, I think especially, we need to think of, brainstorm on what is that new way to communicate with parents? Because it doesn't seem to get to them in any language. My biggest concern was when I first started was that there wasn't enough multi-language, Spanish-speaking communication going out. Well, there's plenty of that now and it's still not, doesn't seem to still be getting out there enough. So in your role here with us, probably one of the biggest things that we'll be looking for is you as a parent with little kids in school, trying to find, hear whether the parents say, why? Why aren't they listening? Why aren't they looking into what's going on with their kids? Any ideas on what can be done? It's not just the basic or the out-of-the-box that we've been doing that can get to parents? Because we can't reach them right now. Not all of them.
Well, I will say, my sister, I have a niece who's also in third grade and she's in the hook school. And we have to, we have to look at the bigger picture, too. There's parents now, like, that are going to be dropping off closer to the 40-year-old, you know, marker.
There's nothing wrong with that.
No, no, no. Absolutely not. No, 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 because you know what? By that same, by that same token, then you have parents that are going to be on the counterpart that are going to be dropping off at the age of 20. You know, so the point is that when I was growing up, my mom didn't have Facebook. My mom didn't have social media. We have social media now and I'll take it even further and maybe potentially minorly off-topic, but I think the level of structure and involvement that the Chelsea School System has, it's truly underrated. I read recently a horrifying story about a young lady that if the school system would have implemented a simple, hey, your child is not here right now. It's past first period. Your child is not here. Where is your child? That child would probably still be going home to their parents. And, you know, that school system was going to start implementing something that I remember was happening when I was in high school. So that is, again, I understand that there's going to be, you know, that, oh, you can't beat a dead horse or you're beating a dead horse kind of situation, but that's not the case. When I was growing up, we had buildings that were in rubble and starting. And now these buildings are huge and it's completely taken over. Our city is constantly evolving and with that, the people are evolving. So if that means that we have to utilize more social media, we have to utilize word of mouth, we have to utilize... You guys had the surveys that were sent out by the school system that was unspoken of 12 years ago to talk about mental health from a parent to a teacher, to a teacher, to a student. I was telling the other candidates that I remember that when my little, one of my siblings started and I myself am dyslexic, I remember I used to have to be pulled out of my classroom on a weekly basis with one special teacher that would help, you know, me deal with my frustration of reading and so forth. And my brother himself would have to be pulled out of the classroom for his medications. Now, I feel like, again, all of that is so open and we just want our children to do better. And once the parents see that level of transparency and the fact that, hey, you know what? These people are actually on our children's corner. So if the student has to go in, right, and then we have to potentially do our job here, then that missing link is going to be the parents. So once they're put on that spotlight, the same way that children want to please their caregivers, the caregivers are going to go ahead and do that. And I used to coach way before I even, my sister and I coached Little League and the first two practices, I noticed right away, parents were just dropping off their children and leaving. That's it. For an hour, an hour and a half. Then I would have to, you know, wait until they got back from doing whatever they did. Two practices. By the third practices, I said, excuse me, this is not going to fly. This is what I need. For every single practice, I need one person present. You don't have to be in our way. But I need these kids to see that there's someone there waiting for them, that if they get hurt, there's someone there. And you know what happened? The rest of the season, at least one parent started showing up for those kids. So what you allow will continue, but it starts with just throwing the stone in the water and causing that ripple effect. So, I mean, I have personally no problem saying, you don't like it? What are you going to do to help us fix it? How can we fix it? That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Covas. School committee members, any other questions? Great. Alrighty. So, Ms. Covas, thank you so much for being here and showing your interest in this position. Before closing off the school committee portion, I'd like to just ask those who are parents and guardians in this room to raise your hand.
In the school, just in general?
In general.
No, I didn't know what she was...
Children don't stop. They're always...
So the reason why, thank you. The reason why I ask this question is, Ms. Covas, you in your biography mentioned you have two beautiful children. So I just want to thank you for showing up here. You're not, you won't be the only one, hypothetically speaking, if you wrote it on right. And it takes a lot of work, dedication, and it's not easy, but we do it for our children. So thank you for showing your commitment and for being here. And so before I turn it over to the city council for questions, I'd like to ask you one last question. What is your vision for the Chelsea School System?
My vision for the Chelsea School System is that when our athletes go to other districts, they no longer feel humbled in the sense that they feel that they're not equipped with certain, the same commodities, if you will. I want to get the student, the typical Chelsea student that chip off their shoulder, you know? Our educational system, our resources are just as good, if not better. They're just not being taken advantage of. And I want that by the time I, from the moment I set foot to the moment I finish, I want to see that. I want to see that from my children all the way up to the high school kids. Because you guys talked about attendance and you guys talked about a lot of things in the last meeting. And I think it's important for children to care. And it's, if we really think about it, it's easier to raise a healthy, emotionally competent child all the way up to adulthood than to try to, you know, fix an adult, if you will. So I think it really does start from the educational level and all the way up. And they need that reinforcement. There's people there that are there for you. They are rooting for you. And the minute we start to feel that there's resistance, then that's where we, I personally feel, go wrong. So if you're asking me about the vision, I would say that academically speaking, I want the kid to say, yes, I went to Chelsea Public Schools. I came, I come from Chelsea. And say that with a certain level of pride that I know comes from knowing that I had people on my corner. Because I did personally, you know, from the grades that I hated, guess what? The teachers that sat there and pretty much like, no, you know this. I know that you know this. You might not be testing properly now, but you know this. That reinforcement, that made the difference. And, you know, from my mother telling me like, no, whatever you do educationally speaking, that is, what you learn is for you. You know, nobody can take that away from you. Nobody can give you more. So you're either prepared or you're not, so.
Thank you, Ms. Covas. I'll now turn it over to our city council for more questioning.
Thank you. At this time, I'll open the floor up to my colleagues on the city council. Ms. Judith Garcia.
Mr. President, thank you, Clarie, for, Clarie Angelis, for being here today and for answering your questions so eloquently. As you see, today is not actually a typical day. Usually, we have the school committee members here. We have the council here. I would love to hear from you. How do you see us working and collaborating together?
As in the two committees or as in...
As in school committee and council.
Well, I think it depends on what you're discussing. Because I'm sure that, you know, everyone's going to have certain opinions and certain wants and needs. And, you know, in my opinion, it's either going to be, you know, we're all cooperating and maybe compromising or it's something that is a subject that we all are passionate enough about that unifies us to the point that we could actually work very well together. But you know what? We have to really just work together and agree to disagree, be respectful towards each other's opinions and understand that there's an underlying reason as to why somebody might feel strongly about a specific topic. And, you know, we have to dig deeper. If I'm not following or if you're not following, you know, I don't think that we should shy away from being responsible and saying, I need you to elaborate. I need to know more so that I can understand or we can be on board or we can facilitate this, if you will.
Council Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you for being here. I have a question. I just got a statement. I just wanted to thank you for your willingness to serve. I know it's a little, excuse me, a little intimidating probably sitting up here, but your presentation and your answer have not shown any fault there. I think you'd be a great asset to the Chelsea School Committee. I hope you're part of this vote on, you know, whenever we take this vote. But I just really want to thank you for your time on, as you see. It's not a lot of people willing to give up their time, you know, and you had two children and you have others and you wanted to dedicate yourself and betterment of this city and other schools, just thank you very much.
Councilor Brown, you need a mic.
That's okay.
They couldn't hear you.
Councilor Cooperrow. Speak in a microphone, please.
What would you change? You want to go become a school committee person. What would be your contribution and what would you change? What would you do?
What would I do? Change as in?
Well, you must know what the school committee does, right?
Of course. They delegate.
Okay, so what would you change? You think it's running completely smooth, that it needs no change or it doesn't do anything? What would be your contribution? What would you change? What would you make it better? And in other words, what would you do to make it better than it is?
Well, I would contribute my opinion. I would start there, you know, as far as there, I mean, I'm not saying that everything runs smoothly because that would be pretty much very Dorothy of me or very much Alice in Wonderland. We're not, we're very far from Wonderland. There's work to be done and I'm sure that depending on the work that's being done, it's going to be the level of smoothness, if you will, that's going to happen. So as far as change goes, you know, I have to first get acclimated in what's going on. I need to dig deeper as far as what their overall tasks are. As I can see, as far as I'm concerned, they have been able to move quickly with all of the recent demands and quickly, efficiently, and to the point where at least maybe minimal, if you will, pushback from Chelsea residents. I do follow the what's happening in Chelsea page and, yeah, I mean, parents complain about drop-off and pick-up being, you know, not as smooth as it could be. Parents have tons of topics in which they can, you know, they can be upset about or just notice that there's flaws in the system. There's flaws in every system, Mr. Cooperrow, but the difference is that if we're not working towards fixing the flaws or at least putting the flaws on the table, again, what is allowed will continue. Because if nobody's doing anything to change it, then it's going to, it's going to keep happening, so.
I asked you that question because when you run, right, you have a reason to run. Your purpose is either to enhance what's there or to make it better. So that was the question, like...
That's enhancing. I wouldn't be giving up my children's time if I didn't feel that my time here would be well-served. Because whatever time that I am here, I have to, I have to know in my heart that if I'm here for two hours, three hours, however long I'm doing this weekly or bi-weekly meeting and then going out there and voicing and keep the word of mouth happening as to, and hey, guess what? These surveys, why weren't more parents involved? What's going on? Like, again, once you put the spotlight and you, okay, you don't like it, again, boom, ball's in your court. What are we going to do? Did you take the survey? Did you do this? Again, I'm not going to sit here and pretend that everything is peachy. But I'm not going to take time away from my family not to make our current situation better.
You want to be here to make a difference for the children.
For the children and everyone's children, yes.
Council Robinson and Councilor Vito.
My question is, how do you plan to be involved in the school community and what does that include?
I'm sorry? Who am I speaking to?
The question was, how do you plan to be involved in the Chelsea School Community? What does that involve?
Well, I live here, so. I mean, some, it's just... Well, as far as being involved, I think I need to first address what the needs are. So if we have... So, if we have, hey, this is what we need done, again, these parents needed to complete these surveys, you know? We need this taken care of, you know? I live here. I plan on, you know, spending my time trying to figure out what needs to get done, and then from there, delegating if that means that we're gonna have to team up and figure out ways that are gonna make that happen, and that's what's gonna need to happen.
Just a follow-up to that. I see that you were captain of your softball team.
Yes, sir.
Being involved in a school community, are you gonna be attending the events that the children put on? Are you gonna support the athletics by attending games and showing up at events?
Oh, I would be pretty hypocritical if I didn't. Or at least, it depends on how I would go ahead and manage my time, not to, you know, throw a shade anywhere. But, I mean, it's something that I do enjoy. And like I said, I did contribute to that way before, thank you, way before my children even came about. I, I was, the last time that I coached, or helped my sister coach, was in 2011. My first son wasn't born until 2016. So, I've always tried to see the need and do things that are enjoyable, and, you know, it's humbling. Because I still have now, you know, with, with, especially with boys, for some reason, it's like you don't see them for a second, and then it's like they come back and you have a man running toward you saying, "Coach, coach, remember me?" And I'm like, not like that! But, you know, there's only so much that you can do. So, yes, I would be making an attendance and appearance, and I would actually be a little bit, probably more hands-on than most people might potentially want. But that's fine, too. I'm perfectly okay with that.
All right, thank you.
Counselor Vido.
And a couple of comments. First of all, I want to disagree with you about Chelsea not being a Wonderland. Because this place leaves me feeling a wonder, wondrous every single day. Secondly, I want to tell you that you're doing a phenomenal job, that it's a lot of pressure to sit there and get all these questions from a bunch of people who win elections and don't even have to answer most of the questions you're answering. And that's just because of our low voter turnout. It's just a reality. So, I just want to commend you for being here. I guess my question for you is, if you had a magic wand and there was one thing about our school system that you can address, what would that one thing be?
About the school system? Well, I would say that if I had a magic wand and I could change one thing, I would say that my, what I would want to change is for those educators that are potentially jaded or no longer see their, their breakthrough, or no longer feel like they're making an impact. For them to be able to have like a minor glimpse of when they started. Because that, that essence is what the kids need. And then from the children's perspective, for them to know that they matter. And again, if, if your kids are going to school and they're happy about school, and it's a safe place, which I know that for a lot of children, especially during the pandemic, school was their safety, and then that was, you know, but by that same token, I know that there was a lot of kids that appreciated remote learning and did better during remote learning, you know? So, but they appreciated it because they weren't bullied, or they felt like they, they didn't have to necessarily try as hard to, to fit in. So, if I had to change something, I would just change the overall perspective. So, that people just remember why they started and that that, they, they keep that true, you know?
Bring back the honeymoon period.
Yeah, exactly. It's always, it's always nice in the honeymoon period, but then, you know, it ends, and then, you know, you're no longer in Wonderland.
Thank you very much. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Counselor Taylor.
Thank you for coming. Counselor Vido stole my thunder a little bit about what, but I, that's okay. We're on the same wavelength. I was gonna ask you what you see as the biggest challenge, really, for this, for this school system. And I, I think there are, they are multiple. This, this school system has multiple challenges. One, from my perspective, is, you know, getting the parents to participate in the process, okay? We have a problem with civic participation across the board. And, and I think this is one of the major things that we need to, we need to, we all need to try to change. How would you go about, first of all, what's your, what do you see as the, as the biggest challenge? Or a couple of the biggest challenges? And what would you do to help try to foster more involvement with what's going on and have parents try to be more present in what's going on?
Well, something that I realized raising my children is that, for the most part, if there's discrepancies within, like, for example, my mother's methods and my methods, it's more of a generational gap. And true, we want our children as she wanted, you know, everyone works with, with the tools that they have. So, yes, the problem is there. The parents are not always gonna be able to be engaged, because they have to work. That's the bigger picture. You know, they're, but by that same token, we need to remind the parents that it takes a village. So, it doesn't have to be, you know, the, the head of the household. There's multiple family dynamics. And as long as the children feel like somebody is showing up for them, they're gonna show up. And they're gonna do better, and they're gonna be proud about the educational system. And they're gonna, you know, if you think about it, everybody likes positive feedback. You know, I don't happen to have a problem with negative feedback either, but that's just me. I, I mean, that's, that's fine. But feedback is feedback, so that's all I can really say to that, really. I, I understand. If we want to look at the beast, yes, there's a huge, there's a huge pile that we can look at that needs to be tackled. But you're not gonna tackle it just by running into the pile. You have to start piece by piece. And then eventually, you'll notice that all of the pieces are gonna work together. And once people realize that all of these people are working together and that we have a common goal, chances are, we might not agree on how we're gonna get there, but we're gonna work together. That's the only way that we, that we're gonna actually get something done. So, we can argue till we're blue, or we can actually do something about it, so.
I have a...
Or action.
I have a follow-up. What, why, why do you want to be on the school committee?
Oh, I don't think you've been listening, sir. I have two sons that are gonna be a part of the school.
No, I understand, but I mean, so, but you, I mean, you, you didn't, you didn't run when there was a...
I did not know that there was an opening available. Otherwise, I would have ran, and we wouldn't be having this conversation. I don't mean to be cheeky, but at this point, you know, like, as she stated, you know, the people that did run didn't have...
No, I give you credit. You're the only person that stepped forward, so.
Right, and if I would've...
I give you, I give you full, full credit for that.
Right, but if I would have known that the vacancy was available, you know, maybe it was just based on timing as well. I actually became aware that the seat was available on Wednesday, Wednesday afternoon. I believe I was requested to present three letters of recommendation. I got four, and I felt that because I, four people took the time to go ahead and do that, that I deserved to submit that, because four people took their time out of their day to do that for me, in such short notice. And again, as a mom of two, I do feel that time is important. I did not know originally that the seat was available.
So, so I, 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 I think your answer is illuminating, that, that you, I mean, it seems like this process has been kind of an accelerated process, and that, and that maybe if, if, you know, we would have had a little bit more time and, and, and worked a little harder, we could have, we could have had more candidates come forward. Not that there's anything wrong with your good self here, but...
How long has this been open for, sir?
Well, I mean, the, the, when was the, when was the...
I'm going to cut this, I'm gonna cut this off. Let me remind everybody. We have three candidates that we have to interview tonight. And the purpose of tonight is to ask questions of each candidate as to why the reasons were that they want to join, why, what their qualifications are. I do not want to have sidetracked...
Over my question.
I do not want to have sidetracked conversations about the process, lack of, lack of candidates, and anything else than people not running and all that. Because, again, I mind you, we have two bodies, legislative bodies in this. We all have to ask questions. And if there's a problem, anyone seems to have a problem about the situation, I would say that deserves its own time and separate meeting from this tonight. So, please be aware, it is already forty-five minutes that this candidate has been in front of us, and we still have two more candidates to interview. So, unless you have a question specific to the candidate itself about her, her background, then I would say allow other colleagues to answer questions, or we get to the next candidates. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. I appreciate your answer.
You're welcome.
The, the agenda is that we are, hold on. I'm answering Counselor Vido's question first, and then I'll take other questions. The agenda right now is that we are nominating, you know, the, we are interviewing the candidates number three, and then we go to the nomination regarding the other districts. If anyone wants to make a motion to end the, end the discussion right here of the interview process, and then make a decision and go right to nomination, and then we continue?
Mr. President, I make a motion to stop the questions and nominate Clari Angelis Kovas for District Four, so we can move on to the rest of the candidates.
Just that I would like to have a question first.
Okay, I'm so sorry, but I just, I thought you wanted to cut it short. I was trying to support your movement.
We still have, it seems, a couple of other councils that haven't asked questions yet. Counselor Vega Maldonado.
I was gonna ask Clari if she could mention some of her strengths. And I would, so, yeah, and then I want to comment a little bit.
My strengths?
Mm-hmm.
Well, well, I don't believe that everything's, you know, very Alice in Wonderland. I am a very persistent person, and I don't give up easily, so. And if I'm, it's something that I'm very passionate about, you're either gonna be very well-educated about it, or you're gonna end up being very passionate about it. Because if I, if I, if it moves me, it's what I, that's what I do.
Thank you, Clari. One of the comments that I would like to mention is that I know Clari on a personal level, because she was one of my former constituents, and I would say that she is someone that is extremely involved and cares about the city of Chelsea and our children and her children. Even though her children are just entering the schools, if she has any questions or comments and sees anything that other parents, she has been a liaison. So, she has been instrumental in the relationship that we have built previously. And I just want to say thank you so much for, you know, putting yourself out here. And I'm very happy that you're doing this, because I know that you would be a tremendous asset to the school committee. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Kovas, my question is, you stated earlier in the beginning that you received probably some extra attention from educators in form of, to help you. I think you said with dyslexia, if I'm correct?
Correct.
So, can you expand a little bit about that, what that, what that experience was for you, and how that may impact your actions, and what you may be pushing for special education or assistance to other students in the school system?
Well, when, again, when I had that, my teacher's name was Mr. Hall, and that happened to be in fourth grade. At that time, I had to be removed from the classroom on a set day. And it was, you know, he worked with me as well as another student, and we were like in a smaller group. And at that point, you know, it was, everybody knew that he was gonna come and take me for the walk. And, you know, from what I gather, based on your newfound information, that, you know, I was really surprised that people were so open about, again, mental health and just working so that if we're, like, any of our differences are less out there. You know, like, children are naturally curious, so, you know, for the most part, my peers were the same. So, after that, I said, okay, well, I have a hard time. Like, my, my words jumble, and I can't figure it out. And he helps me figure out ways for me to go ahead and do that. Another teacher who actually ended up doing it based on disciplinary actions, Ms. Dilliani, and Ms. De Feliz, we called her Ms. Dee for the dictionary, because whenever we did something wrong, or were not necessarily being, you know, the way we're supposed to be, then we would end up having to do dictionary work. And I started to notice that my dictionary work, ironically enough, had a whole lot of Bs and Ds and Ms. and Ns. And, you know, again, extra work from educators that had to do that, that didn't have to go that extra mile. And what started like a punishment ended up really, you know, being something that helped me. I love reading, and, you know, again, dyslexia back then wasn't, and I have, you know, were dyslexia and numerical dyslexia, unfortunately for me. So, I hated math. I hated math, and I just couldn't figure it out, you know? And again, another educator also figured it out for me. And she guided me through it. A, a, and a subject that I would have flunked, just based on, at that point, I would have done whatever needed to be done, to get out of that class, to spare me the embarrassment of having to sit there, you know? Because of those educators doing that. At that time, I know that now there's laws, there's different legislate, there's different information that this school district has now that they didn't have then. I mean, it's, it's, it evolves. So, maybe it's not as severe. Maybe the children are a little bit more integrated now. That's all something that I'm gonna be finding out quite soon, whether it's through the school committee, or whether it's when I step into the school system with my sons. But that's just something that helped me personally.
Counselor Robinson mentioned earlier about your past being in the softball team, but I also read in your, one of the recommendations by Ms., let me see, Amanda Quintana. I think it said that she positions, so my question is, I'm sorry, no, actually, it was Ashley Calzada, just the years involved in the athletic programs. So, I, I, besides softball, was there any other programs that you participated in and played?
I tried soccer once, and then decided that there was no way in that short period of time that I was gonna get the endurance that it was gonna take for me to run from one side of the football field to the other side of the football field. And because I was a catcher, I did not really appreciate getting kicked in my shins all night, you know, in a game. So, then the school plays, you know, I think, in my case, because the sports also overlapped with, you know, certain theatrical productions that I happened to, because I was also in band, and I was also in the theater department. It just overlapped, so while I would, like, for example, try out for the volleyball team, or by the time my sophomore year came, I already knew that there was gonna be some sports that I was not gonna be able to, whether I wanted to participate in them or not, engage in, because it was gonna be a conflict of interest, or I wasn't gonna be able to be at two practices at once, or it was just gonna be too much for, you know, more than I could chew, if you will. So, that's why softball was the one thing that I personally really enjoyed. It, it brought me closer to my, my, my dad, because we would have to have our practices early. And so, that's the one thing that I never, I never stopped, you know? I liked basketball. I liked, of course, I would try out, because my friends, you know, hey, the team needs you. But if, if my attention was called elsewhere by, you know, again, the fall, it was the...
it was the drama club, so I knew that that was where I wanted to be. So.
No, I'm glad I asked the question, because we actually learned a little bit more about your participation, because even though you say you only played one sport, we just found out that you also did drama and theater in the band. So, again, it's great to have a little insight on how much you actually did participate in everything that the high school system was available, and it's a nice insight into you. Are there any other questions? I only have one comment, and again, I want to reiterate what a few of my colleagues have said. I want to applaud you for tonight, for, one, submitting your resume and letter of interest to join the school committee members, but also to be put through this process. You know, to the best of my knowledge, you have zero political experience. You've never had to go out and try to knock on doors or defend what your positions are. And it's very rare that anyone has to go through this particular type of process. We don't put any of our other appointees, any of the boards or commission members, through this process. And I want to applaud, applaud your attention and your behavior tonight. And, again, it's an honor to have you here in front of us. If that's the, if there are no other questions, I'll go back to Councilor Vido, if she wants to put a motion. Councilor Vido, the motion is to have a, go out of our agenda and asks for a roll call or a motion to nominate Ms. Clarice Covas tonight as a District... Four? Four?
Four.
For District Four, correct?
Yes.
So Councilor Vido asked that we take out of order the nomination process for the appointment of school committee for District Four. I take it that she nominates Ms.?
I nominate Clarion Helis-Covas for?
And was seconded.
I second that motion.
It is duly seconded by both Calvin Brown and Councilor Judith Garcia. At this time, the clerk, we're gonna call a roll. We'll call the roll, the members of the school committee first. Just state the name of the candidate you vote to vote for.
What if somebody doesn't want to vote?
They can, I guess, vote present.
Vote present, okay.
School committee members Alvaro, absent. Oregan. Hernandez.
Clarion Helis-Covas.
Clarice Covas.
Covas Caraballo.
School committee member Abbott.
Clarion Helis-Covas Caraballo.
Thank you.
School committee member Garcia.
Ms. Covas.
School committee member Velez.
Clarion Helis-Covas Caraballo.
And school committee member Rivera.
Jimenez, but Ms. Covas, thank you so much for being with us.
Councilor Cupevill. Councilor Teneri Garcia.
She has to state the name of the candidate. Covas Caraballo.
Caraballo, okay. Council... Councilor Teneri Garcia.
Ms. Covas.
Councilor Robinson.
Caraballo.
Councilor Taylor.
Ms. Covas.
Council Lopez.
Clarion Helis-Covas.
Caraballo.
Councilor Vega Maldonado.
Clarion Helis-Covas Caraballo.
Councilor Zaneda.
Covas Caraballo.
Councilor Brown. Councilor Vido.
I'm used to having a mic, I'm sorry.
Cabo. Councilor Vido.
Clarion Helis-Covas Caraballo.
Councilor Jesus.
Clarion Helis-Covas Caraballo.
And Councilor Judith Garcia.
Clarion Helis-Covas Caraballo.
Your next step, I believe that there is a core check that has to be done. It wasn't completed yet. Counselor, is that true? Correct. I don't think, I highly suspect that that won't be an issue. And following the core check, then you will meet with the clerk to be sworn in. You'll be contacted by the members of the school committee soon.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
If we can now ask, if we can now ask Fatima Tabriz bring in Catherine Cathy Cabral. Councilor Judith Garcia. Please, please, everyone, please calm down, and we need to carry on with the meeting. Judith Garcia.
I'm calling for a point of personal privilege, please.
You have the floor.
Thank you. So to my colleagues and to everyone present here, I am fully going to disclose that I will be recusing myself from the next portion of interviews. I am the city council for District Five, but actually, one of the candidates here, fully disclosing, is a colleague of mine at my full-time employer, which is the Neighborhood Developers, and therefore, considering on the basis of appearance of conflict, I will be recusing myself for the next portion. So I trust everyone that you will make the right decision, but good luck and good evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Roya Avellaneda. I'm the city council president. And joining me here up on the dais is the chairperson for the school committee, Ms. Kelly Garcia, along with the members of the city council and the school committee members seated in front. Tonight, we're going to ask a bunch of questions. We've received your letter of interest and your impressive resume, and I'm going to now allow the school committee to ask questions relative to your interest in joining the school committee, and also any relevant questions in that. So at the time, again, once again, Ms. Kelly Garcia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Avellaneda. Hi, Ms. Cabral. Nice to see you. So as Mr. Avellaneda mentioned, we have both teams here present tonight. And I'd like to now turn it over to my colleagues on the school committee for questions. Mr. Jimenez.
There we go. There we go. Thank you for joining us tonight. Just wanted to give you the space to just tell us a bit more about who you are or why you were interested in this position. Thank you so much for being here.
Good evening, everyone. Again, my name is Cathy Cabral, and I'm a Chelsea resident and seventh and eighth grade science teacher at Excel Academy Charter School. One of the reasons I'm interested in school committee starts with being a student here and a product of Chelsea Public Schools. I started at the Shertlift School, then went on to the Caminos program at Kelly School, the Brown Middle School, and finally at Chelsea High School. Being part of Chelsea Public Schools has instilled the lessons of empathy, generosity, and service to others. And that's exactly why I am interested in this position. As a recent graduate, I think I bring a fresh and unique perspective and nuance to the current moments that we are facing now, the needs that our students and families, the needs that they are currently facing, and to give feedback on policy that is very much needed during this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jimenez. Any other follow-up questions from the school committee? Ms. Velez.
Hi, and welcome. I just, I'm curious to know, so... I see that you work at the charter school, so we lose our students to the charter school, therefore, we lose funding to our public schools, because we do have to give it to the charter school. As a school committee member, what would be your stance? A couple of years ago, we had a big question, too, that came up, and they wanted to put more charter schools, and we were against it. So let's say that comes up again, and you're sitting on the seat. Whose side are you gonna be on?
Yeah, thank you for that question. I think it's a very nuanced perspective. And I think, as a product of Chelsea Public School, and as someone who currently works at a charter school, I think it's important that parents and students have choice over the schools that they choose, regardless of whether it is a public school or a charter school. As a product of public schools, I see the investment and the extreme need, especially during this pandemic. And every dollar counts, right? And I see that's why, that's a question that you're asking. And so I think, regardless of whether or not our students are, thank you so much, regardless of the fact, of whether they choose to go to a charter school, such as Excel, or to attend Chelsea Public Schools, as I have, and that my Chelsea family has chosen, I would particularly, would side on the choice of parent choice, so that they have the most informed decisions. Our families know best for what they want for their children and the future of their education.
I agree with you. It's a parent's choice, but as a school committee member, you're just, when you're wearing that hat, it's for our current students enrolled in our public schools. So would you be voting for more charters, thinking to give the family more choices, or against, because we want to keep the funding for our students that are in our schools?
Yes. So I would lean on the side of for charter schools, so parents can have student or choice over the schools that they, the wide variety of schools that they have options to. But I do understand the impact that it may have, and knowing that, regardless, knowing that Chelsea Public Schools deserves the funding, that deserves equal funding just as much as charter schools.
Thank you, Ms. Velez. Any other questions from school committee members? Mr. Jimenez.
I guess I just would like to hear more about, you know, what are some specific areas of work that you would be excited to, you know, be a part of, once you join the school committee?
Yeah, definitely. Most recently, I penned an op-ed around educators of color and the need for educators of color, and so particularly, that is something I'm very passionate about. As a homegrown educator and educator of our students, I'm really passionate that we have, and advocate for more educators of color within the Chelsea Public School system. Similarly, I would love to have more input around the policy and budget subcommittee, as well as curriculum and instruction. As a teacher, I think that I can, I have, I'd be an asset on the curriculum and instruction, having been and worked with a variety of science curriculums. And obviously, as being part of school committee and on the policy and budget side, I think it's important, especially as it comes to funding as well.
Mr. Jimenez, is there a follow-up?
Oh, awesome.
Any other questions from the school committee? No? Awesome. Ms. Cabral, can you talk a little bit more about the research, oh, I'm sorry, your research experience, particularly in DC?
Yes. So, excuse me. As an undergrad, I was selected for a national program to represent my community here in Chelsea, to be part of the Congressional Hispanic Caucus Institute. And there, I served on the federal level, exploring policy as an intern in Congressman Louis Correa's office, who represents California. As part of the Congressional Hispanic Caucus Institute, I had a focus on equity and around particularly looking at different case briefs that related to education, and what it meant to consider equity for our students of color. And so this is something that I was really passionate about, and had written several policy memos to the congressperson relating for the need for more culturally responsive and anti-racist curriculum that reflected the needs of our students, to make sure that we have educators that represent our students, and to be mirrors and windows. Earlier, I mentioned that one of my passions is to make sure that we have mentors for our students that represent what they look like, and the power of that. It brings me so much joy to be able to be in a parent-teacher conference, and to be able to speak the same language as many of the families in our schools. And I think, and that was one of the things that was at the forefront of my policy memos, to ensure that our students have the necessary mentors and the quality education that they deserve.
Thank you, Ms. Cabral. And I'll ask you the same question I asked the previous candidate. What is your vision for the Chelsea Public School system?
That's a phenomenal question, and a loaded question at that, right? Considering the pandemic and what that means for our students. And I think it's one centered around social-emotional learning. And what this means is that we're considering not only the academic benefits of our students, but also ensuring that their mental health is at the forefront of their education. When, every day I walk into my students' classrooms, I can't just consider science, right? I can't just consider the scientific phenomena in our world. I have to consider also what they're dealing with outside of the classroom. And so my vision is to ensure that we have a curriculum that is, that considers the whole child, that ensures that not only are we, you know, considering MCAS scores, but we're also making sure that at the forefront of our teaching, out of our schools, that we have educators that care about the whole child.
Thank you, Ms. Cabral. I'll now turn it over to our president, Avellaneda.
At this time, if any of my colleagues have any questions for Ms. Cabral, please raise your hand, and I'll recognize you, and you can ask a question. Councilor Brown. Please speak into the microphone, so that the...
Hi, Katie. Councilor Brown. My name is...
Get in here. Thank you for joining us. Thank you for your interest and your desire to be a school committee person. I read your reference from your extended background. I'm very impressed, and I know that it's like a hot seat there, but, you know, we're glad to have candidates come out and to really carry the mantle for us here in the school department as a member of the school committee, and just want to wish you best. And you're doing a great job sitting here. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. One clarification I do want to make. My name is actually pronounced Cathy, but thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Can you repeat that?
Oh, my name is pronounced Cathy Cabral.
Cathy?
Yes, thank you.
Cabral.
Yes, thank you so much.
Anybody else? Councilor Vega Maldonado.
Muchisimas gracias. My question for you is, what is your largest concern as a Chelsea resident for our children? And how do you envision solving that, being on the school committee?
Thank you for that question. I think my greatest concern... I think particularly around the retainment. I'm gonna kind of come back to the retainment of educators of color, and I think that it's such a great need. As a product of Chelsea Public Schools, I remember that the only, like, I did not have an educator of color during my, you know, twelve years of experience in Chelsea Public Schools. And I remember starting ninth grade at Chelsea High with more than 500 students. But when I walked across that stage at graduation, there was only 250 students that walked across that stage that day. And I think this speaks to the fact that there's a lack of educators of color that are culturally responsive to meet the needs of our students. And so I think our greatest concerns is ensuring that we have a team that can carry our students and realize their fullest potential, because we have such amazing students. Like, I see them every day, and the joy that they have. I'm kind of getting emotional right now. But they, and I hope that they can have mirrors and windows that reflect their greatest potentials as well.
Thank you. Muchisimas gracias.
Gracias.
Sorry. Councilor Jesus.
Thank you for joining us and for your time. I'm reading here that you... Um, I'm reading here that you um worked a little on the summer and winter of twenty eighteen um on housing-related um issues in, in the city or with the Housing uh Director of Planning and Development. Um, I, I'm wondering, what are your thoughts around the needs in housing? And how would you bring those needs to the table as a school committee official?
Yes, and I think education is so, it's such an intersectional place, right? When I consider, when I come into the classroom, I also have to consider um our housing. Are, are, are our students housed? Are they, um, do they have consistent meals, right? And so I think that's a really great question to consider the whole child here. Um, and particularly as rents are rising, um, and frankly, folks are being pushed out of Chelsea um because of the lack of, or the, the lack of accessibility to affordable housing. I think that we need to consider are our families, you know, what are the rates of homelessness amongst our families? And how can we best support them to ensure that when we are providing an education, it's considering the whole child and all the different um elements that are impacting them when they come through doors uh each day through our schools, whether it be the Brown Middle School um in Chelsea High. Uh, I think it's important to consider housing um and ensuring that we have more Latinx homeownership. My parents, the reasons why I've been able to live and continue to live in Chelsea is cause my family was able to save up money and buy and purchase their own home where they were able to house their family members. And so we were able to continue to live in Chelsea bec- for those reasons. Um, and that's a privilege to say that. There are not a lot of, there's only, there's less than, you know, thirty percent of Latinx homeowners in Chelsea. And I think we need to increase that number in order to uh, because this obviously impacts the education of our students and the quality of their education as well.
Thank you, thank you.
Counselor Robinson, then Counselor Vito.
We've had many conversations um in the past. I'm kinda curious. You mentioned a, a few different things. I know that the question about the charter school piece came up. And I guess my question to you would be that you know that the high school needed people of color to apply for, to be in the system. I'm kinda wondering why you didn't choose your alma mater and you chose to go to a charter school? Maybe you couldn't like to me.
Yeah, definitely.
Why you made that choice?
So I uh graduated in, in, just at the beginning of the pandemic in um the summer of twenty twenty. And so during this time, um, as I was uh, I looked to teach for America because I was a political science major and had only taken a couple of education um classes throughout. And so throughout this time, I um was looking for different opportunities, particularly here in Chelsea. And so um as I was uh, I was actually applying for a place in, at Chelsea High, a position at Chelsea High. But because of a budget, uh, funding freeze or a budget freeze, I'm, I'm not sure the exact uh phrasing of it. However, they didn't, at the moment, in the summer of twenty twenty, the school committee had to decide to pause funding to hire additional teachers at Chelsea High. And so I would have loved to teach at Chelsea. I wanted to teach at Chelsea High. And however, because of the funding that was available um at the moment and because of the nature of our pandemic, um, I had to choose the first school that had um, that provided an offer for me. And so I, I would have loved to teach at Chelsea. Um, it's, it's my home. Uh, it's where so many of um my amazing memories and teachers, whether it's Mr. Peacock or Mr. Martino who um had taught at Chelsea High. Um, you know, they were formative years of my time and I would have loved to teach at Chelsea.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Vito.
President, um, I, my question was very similar to what Counselor Robinson was saying. When I heard you answer the charter question inside, I kinda cringed a little. Um, I was a person that I chose a charter school for my daughter because I do respect the parent's choice and think that they should have that, but also understand the issues that we're perpetuating within our public school system when we go that way. So to have a person that's applying to be on a school committee share that opinion, it's a little kinda like, ugh! And then I, 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 I hear you and I've long been a fan of yours. I know that, I, I, I know the work that you do. I know your, your, your work. I know who you are and I'm like such a fan. And I'm listening to what you're saying and I'm like, I don't want her on our school committee. I want her in our schools, right? But so long as we're gonna keep, you know, going to charter schools and so long, it's like we, we get in our own way. Anyway, nonetheless, I just, you know, I just, I guess, I just wanted to make that, that comment because I would be hypocritical to not say it out loud because I was feeling it. Um, but I do have a question. And the question is if you had a magic wand and you can address any issue within our school system, um, what would it be?
Yes, thank you for that. And I appreciate your critical eye to that issue and I, and I know that it's not a one size fits all because no child is one size fits all, right? And so I, I thank you for that critique. Um, uh, and as for your question to my magic wand, I would have to say, there are times when as a teacher, I wish that I could split myself into ten different people so I can um be all that my students need. And so I wish we had smaller class sizes. I think um we need less than uh, you know, a s- class size of less than fifteen ideally. We are seeing in many of our classrooms that our, our classrooms are to the brink. There's more than thirty students in each class. I remember in my math classes, there'd be students sitting on top of tables because there wasn't enough chairs in our classrooms. And I think that's an issue. And our, our students deserve more, frankly. Our families deserve more. And so um I would definitely say that um if we could focus on um like the individual student through smaller class sizes, I think this would, that would benefit so much uh the quality of our education for our students uh and just make a change in Chelsea as a whole. Because we know that we're preparing students to be twenty-first century learners and be adaptive and self-aware. And we need mentors that can give their capacity in small classrooms. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Counselor Taylor, no?
I'm probably the only one sitting up here that agrees with you on charter schools. Um, I uh, I think that the more choice people have, the better off they are and the more freedom, the better. Um, so I'll uh, I'll agree with your stance there. You said that, you said that the parents um the parent should have the, the, the freedom to choose what school they send their kids to. Should parents also have a strong voice on what is actually being taught in the schools?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm taking my time because I wanna, I will, I wanna make sure that I'm intentional about uh the way I'm answering this. And I think that it depends, right? We're living in a very uh polarized nation right now and I think that we have to be careful the way in which we uh curate the conversation not only with the, with our students and what we're teaching them. And so I do believe that parents should definitely have an input um in their child's education. However, I do think it should be with a careful lens of what exactly it is. And I have a question for you. Is there a particular position or that you would want students or families to have input on?
Uh, my, my question to you is about how you view the role of parents in, in kind of deciding what, what is or what is, is not taught in the schools.
Thank you.
As a member of the, as a member of the school committee.
Yeah, thank you for clarifying that question. Um, so I do believe as, right, I, I think when we think of education, it's a, it's a, it's a team. Not only as an educator, as students, families do have a, a crucial part um in their child's education and um, and they're one of the key players. And so I do believe they should have a say um and a space to do so and to express their needs on what they think their child should be learning. Um, yes.
And, and are there, are there things, so y- your answer is yes, that parents should have an input?
Yes.
Is there, i- are there things that parents should not have an input on?
Off the top of my mind, I do not, nothing, uh, nothing of concern comes to mind just yet. Um, I think that just because I'm a, a, you know, professional teacher, I went to undergrad, it doesn't mean that I'm uh, like, my mother who has, who, who stopped going to school at eighth grade, she has just as much input on my education as I did or as I do now. Um, and so I think regardless of people's background, their educational attainment, I think their voices very much equal um and they should have a say in their child's education.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Cabral, um, I just wanna go over a little bit of your uh impressive resume here so I get a, a better understanding of some of the things you've done here. And I'll start off with your First Generation Aspirations Program. And it spoke about um helping students, local high school students, go through the college application process. So can you just give me a little bit uh of back on what that was about and your experience there?
Yeah, definitely. So I started um in this program as a, a content tutor. So I would tutor middle school students. Um, and I found that many of our students had a need to ex- or had curiosity to just learn more about the college process. What did that look like? And um I went to school in Lewiston, Maine. There's a huge Somali population and it mirrored a lot of what I saw here in Chelsea. A lot of first gen students whose parents had never gone to college before. And that mirrored a lot of what I experienced as a first gen student. And so I recognized this need within this program and um had spoken with some of the community organizers at my school to start this First Gen Aspirations Program and to curate an experience where we had um Bates Financial Aid. Um, we had different mentors, like current first gen students to come to speak to our students um and to tell them and walk them through what the college process is like. And I think not only was there the informational aspect of like what it means to go to school, but I think it also gave them a sense of like, hey, this is possible. And I think that's what a lot of our students need is to know that like college is totally attainable. And regardless of the, whether you're the first um in your family to go to college, there are uh fuentes, there are different ways to get there, right? And it's a, it's a matter of building coalition, building power. And what that looked like, what that looked like was through this First Generation Aspirations Program. And so I uh collaborated with about eleven first gen stu- current college students um and about uh, it was thirty-plus students from the local middle school um that attended our programs as well. And so obviously that, I take that into account. As many of our students here, um, working in the school committee, taking into the count that many of our students are first gen. That is something when I talk about anti-racist work and culturally relevant, that's something that I, I do um, you know, take seriously and, and take into consideration when making policy decisions, um, to take into the count that many of our students have this experience as first gen students of color.
Oh, may I ask, what's the uh age levels that you are currently teaching?
Um, I currently teach seventh and eighth grade, so they're around uh thirteen, uh around uh twelve to fourteen years old.
Thank you. And I, I noticed there in the Bates College, the Office of Intercultural Education, uh bringing, organizing three different cultural celebrations, Hispanic Heritage, Black History, Asian Pacific Heritage Month, and also a raised awareness uh of underrepresented minorities in Blackness and Latino culture and also cross-campus collaborations amongst students of color, first generational students, LGBTQ plus and allies. So a little bit of what that entailed, um particularly, what do you mean by cross-campus collaborations? Is that outside of Bates College also or just explain that to me?
Um, uh, so mainly uh different departments within our schools. So what that might look like is looking at the International Department um or looking at the Asian Studies Department and trying to collaborate to um, you know, discuss different um issues uh that impacted that community and also trying to empower and uplift them as well. Um, and so collaborating with the Asian Club, Asian Studies Department um and these different uh bodies in campus, in the campus to try to organize um either celebrations or discussions around those um, uh, those topics.
Well, that's, does it for me. And again, I'm gonna repeat again what I stated earlier to the previous candidate. Um, I wanna uh, uh, thank you along with my colleagues from both legislative bodies for uh coming in front of us, presenting your letter of interest and um being part of a process that most people do not go through to participate in civic. As I stated, no one on the, any of our boards or commissions that get appointed have to go through this sort of grilling process. And certainly, uh, many of the candidates who ran for office certainly did not have to go through something like this. So um it's rare and I wanna say I'm very impressed in the manner that you handled yourself. Particularly, I know that uh you faced a loaded question, so to speak, with uh being able to handle a position that is uh third real, so to speak. But um I was impressed by the fact you stood your ground um and went forward. And I will echo what uh my colleague Todd Taylor says. It's okay to have a different opinion on a board. Um, that's where the idea of conversations and so forth come. And I, I think that should you be appointed to the board, uh, that perspective and the background would be a welcome to the debate, whether or not on funding. So um anyway, but I thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. And if I can say last words, I'm just appreci- really appreciative of um all the time you all have taken. I know it's been a long day. And um I fully believe that Chelsea Public Schools has prepared me to be um the next leader within our community. And so I, I thank you all and I hope you have a great evening as well.
Thank you. We'll now be uh bringing in our final candidate for District Five and that is uh Ms. Lucia Cologne Enriquez, Enriquez. Sorry, I've known her as Ms. Cologne, but formerly Ms. Cologne, now Ms. Enriquez. I'm gonna go get some water and just uh, just take it from the start if she walks up.
Ms. Enriquez, welcome and thank you for being here tonight. Uh, tonight, as you see, we have two elected bodies in front of you, the City Council and as you know, the school committee, which you've served for many years in the past. We welcome uh questions from the school committee at this moment. Ms. Velez?
Hello, Ms. Enriquez.
Hi.
So, I'm like, what can I ask her? Cause we've worked so, together for so many years. And this came to mind because you served ten years, you left, you ran a campaign, you came back, then you left, not by choice, cause you moved. But I was reflecting back to twenty nineteen, school committee. We were going through some tough times. You were getting a lot from other members. And it was hard for you. We spoke a lot, you were ready to quit, but you held on. So my question to you is what keeps you coming back? What keeps you motivated to wanna stay on school committee?
Thank you, Ms. Velez. And thank you, everybody, um, for giving me this opportunity to be here tonight for this interview uh for District Five. The reason that I'm coming back, um, it is interesting, I have been in the community for, I live in this community for so many, so many years. And I worked in this community for, for so many years that I feel that I have invested myself in the work that I do in the community. And, and the reason that I'm coming back is because I really like my work. I really care about the work of the community. I think that uh being part of the community and knowing what is going on in the community, the issues that are affecting um our residents, really, uh, I wanna make a difference. I wanna, I wanna uh make a difference in people's life. And I'm already, during my time working here in, in, in Chelsea, I, I can- And I know already during my time working here in, in, in Chelsea, I, I can see that. I can see, uh, what I had done and, and, and I feel really rewarding for what I see. People's would, would smile, parents coming to my, to me, talking to me about, uh, how we are helping, how we, as members of the School Committee, we can make a little difference in, in, in the people's, uh, like in the parents, the students. We are here for the students. So, uh, I really care about the educations of our students. It is important. And it is important for us that, uh, we listen then, um, and parents concerns, involve the parents too.
Thank you, Ms. Enriquez. Any other questions from the School Committee? Mr. Jimenez.
Oh, there we go. Uh, thank you for joining us tonight. Uh, I'm curious, what are some of the areas of work that you would like to work on during this term?
Um, thank you, it's a good question. I think that, uh, um, once that you know what, what, what really, uh, are the needs or, or how we can improve the educations of the students in Chelsea, I wanna make sure that, uh, I will continue advocating for, for them to achieve their, for achievement, achievement success, that they, uh, receive the education, the quality of educations that they really deserve and, um, be really fair in terms of, uh, meet the students where they are coming from. So we, we need to, uh, for me, I wanna work in that area to continue advocating for the best educations, um, and working with the parents. Cause I see that it's important always to include the parents, the community. I feel like I have been a voice, um, for the parents and the teachers' communications. And I wanna be a bridge, and I, I wanna continue to be in the bridge, uh, for the, uh, for the parents and, and, and the community, uh, the teachers and, and everybody that are really care about the educations of our students. Then, uh, we need to truly, um, pay attentions, um, what can we do differently? What can we do and better for them to continue the, uh, succeeding in school? And given, offering more opportunities for them to, um, to achieve, um, going to college. Not everybody can go to college, but at least offer them the opportunities available for them.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Enriquez. Any other questions from the School Committee? Awesome. Mr. Avellaneda, turn it back to you.
Thank you. Um, anybody from the City Council who'd like to have any questions to Ms. Colon? Sorry, Enriquez, uh, Councilor Robinson.
How do you envision making a difference on a School Committee? If you can relate that to your experience at reaching out to the Chelsea Adolescents Group that you worked with in the past?
Oh, that I, how I can relate, working with the, I, my experience working in the past with the, with the, um, youth and young mothers, when I used to be working at, um, Roca. And I used to really, um, motivate the, uh, the youth and the young mothers to continue their education. Uh, so that's something that really, um, is, I really consider that it is, it is important, the motivations and the encouragement, uh, for them to continue, uh, finish the school.
I guess, how would you work with the School Committee and the, and the teachers around, um, crisis intervention?
How do I work in concerns of the teachers? So I wanna make sure that the teachers really had like a really good connection with, with the students. So I wanna make sure that the, uh, the teachers are aware where the, the students are coming from, that the teachers are able to, to know the cultures and, uh, like the, the, the socioeconomic of the student, because everything comes together in terms of the, the education, how, uh, if the student knows about the, the, uh, the background or the, uh, the teacher knows the background of the students, then she's gonna be able to understand what's going on with the student in order for the students to, uh, uh, do much better in, in the school, like, uh, you know, in the education.
Councilor Brown.
Thank you. Just wanted to thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
This is a part, as the Council President has said, is really a tough part because you sit up here, um, you see all these faces with masks staring at you. But, you know, really wanna just congratulate you for coming in and thank you for partaking in this part, um, being willing to be selected for the replacement of the vacancy of the School Committee. So, um, we're grateful for your service and all that you've done and we know a lot about you. But, you know, really, um, just always wanna thank those that take time and put their name, not on the ballot, but on the applications they consider me for a School Committee member. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Redo.
Okay, Mr. President. Um, first and foremost, I've known you for over twenty-five years when I was a young person at Roca and you were working with young moms. And I just wanna commend you for your years and years of work, um, in, in the community. Um, and you're one of those leaders that's often quiet, that a lot of people sleep on, but you're always, um, in the background doing the work. So I just really wanna acknowledge you for that. Um, this District Five, uh, ordeal was really troubling and, um, but I'm, I'm, I really feel like we're like in this tough predicament where we have like someone with years of experience, um, and then this young person with like a fresh perspective. And it's like, why can't we have you both, you know? And it, it just really puts us in a, in a bad predicament. But I just really wanted just to commend you for your work. And then I'm gonna ask you the same question I've asked everyone else, and that's if you had a magic wand and you can address any one issue within our school system, what would that be?
If, if I had an issue with the school system?
If you had, if I gave you a magic wand and said, Lucia, you can fix any one thing in the school system, what would it be?
I think that it would be, everybody had, um, the same, equal, um, I would say, like if it, there was, if I, I want everybody like to be on the same page with, with the, uh, with the students, with the teachers, at the same levels, to be in understanding, uh, between the teachers with the student, um, the teachers with the parents, and the administrations, that everybody can understand what's going on in the life of the, of the student. Cause the life of the students depends how the adult see them. So, and then if we see that the student, um, has somebody that are, oh, you won't be able to do anything, you won't be able to succeed, that's why we are teaching that student. We are putting that student down. So we have to see everybody equal, that everybody that are the students and, and in collaboration with the teacher and everybody, community stakeholders, are in the same level to support the education for that student to accomplish, uh, success.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Vega Maldonado.
Hi, Lucia, como esta?
Hi.
Hi, awesome, Lucia, it's like all my life, actually. Um, so, it's nice seeing you and thank you so much for being here. Um, my question for you is, what is your largest concern as a Chelsea resident? And as a School Committee member, how do you envision solving that issue? I guess it's very similar.
Okay. So, what is the biggest concern? Um, and what is the other ambition, what is?
And how do you envision solving that as a School Committee member?
So the biggest concern and how do I can see that making, making different? Like, how I can see it? I think that, um, how do I see, what would be the biggest concern? The biggest concern, um, will be, uh, no having the, um, the biggest concern, I, I see, how do I say? I ambitions to be able to, um, to continue supporting, uh, the students. I, one of the concerns that, uh, it will bother me is that, um, no having, uh, representations in the school based on the, the populations that are we serve in the community, something that we have been lacking in the past, um, in terms of the, um, diversity and inclusions, um, at the, at the, uh, at the school. Teachers not representing the, um, the students and staff doesn't represent the student, diversity. I think that we need to have more diversity and inclusions in, in, in the school. And, and it's, I can see the changes recently. I can see some changes happening already in the schools, like giving the opportunities to, uh, para professionals to pursue more educations in order for them to become teachers and they be part of the, of the education. Because they are the one, the, when we talk about para professionals, uh, teacher assistants, we don't see like a, like a they had a future to become, like a the teacher. Teacher retention, we need to work in that. We need to give them more opportunities to our, our people already that are doing the work in Chelsea, uh, for them to stay. I think it will be that, the education, um, to our, our people already. I would say the teachers, the, uh, para professionals, um, and retention, because we don't really, I see that our teachers are coming to our, our school, they stay for a year, two years, and they leave. And we need to figure out why they leave. And then if it does that, that I stay in, then we need to concentrate on the one that I stay in and prepare them more with more professional developments and, and, uh, opportunities to, for education. Is that, is that?
Thank you, muchisima gracias.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Sorry.
Any other questions? Councilor Taylor.
So, uh, I'd like to thank you and commend you again for all the years that you have been involved in this community and that you have already served this community in so many different ways. It really is amazing and I, I give you all the credit in the world and I know you've got a great heart and, uh, and, uh, you, you are, you, you are one of the pillars of Chelsea. So I, I, I thank you for that. Since the other councilors have asked the questions about the challenges and things, I'll, I'll go back to my, my question about parents. And, um, and what can be done to kind of increase the, the parental involvement in, in education? Um, I know that there's a lot of people that work, you know, you know, sometimes more than one job and, and it's, it's very difficult. So how do we, how do we go about? Because I, I think that's one of the things that has been proven to, uh, you know, raise test scores, to, to get, uh, to lift up the students is to have the support at home and the involvement. So how do we do that?
Thank you.
And do you agree with that?
It is a, it's a great question. We always talk about, uh, the parental involvement and the lacking of parental involvement that I hear when, when we have meetings, like we have community meeting. We always see the same group of parents. And the reason that I will see that group of parents is because like you said, the, the majority of the parents, uh, um, they, they don't have one job. They have one and two, three jobs. And something that really bothers me when I go to, uh, meetings and, and I hear, oh, parents, they don't care. They care about their, the children's education. They really care. And they have some, some barriers in terms of language, the education is, is not, is not the same. They are not able to, to spend time with their children, helping with the homework, because they don't know how.
Yeah.
And that's, that's a big, big challenge for, for the students because it's like a, they have to be receiving some other kinda support outside because even the parents are not able to, to offer. It's not because they don't want it, it's because they don't have the,
Right, right.
the capacity, they don't have the education to help their, uh, their children. So I think that we are trying, like, during, um, offering the opportunities to parents at the level of the elementary school. We have the side consult parents, we, they, 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 um, create activities for parents to get involved when there is something going on in the, in, in the school. So they come and, um, I think that's a great opportunity for the, for the teachers when they, when they had that kind of activities, trying to involve, involve the parent, interact with the teachers, what's going on, like, see the teachers, uh, reaching to the parents. If the parents there are not able to come, then the teacher should be able, uh, to do something with the parents. Maybe doing, um, um, a coffee hour, like, after, something that a parents depend on. I have met parents during coffee hour before they go work. I have pa- I have met parents, cause they're from a schedule, cause I know their schedules. I know that there are some parties that start from two o'clock to eight and then in the middle of the night. So I make different schedules for, to talk to parents. So I think that is a responsibility of both sides, the teachers and, and, and the parents to really connect each other, make appointment, make appointment. If they're not able to come to, uh, to the regular meetings, then I, um, try to figure out what are the days that they should be, uh, that are, they are able to come to meet with the, the teacher one-on-one. That's, that's an option. And, um, I see that we have, that we have really, uh, in the past, when I started School Committee, I know that we didn't have parents liaison. We only had like a one person at the Chelsea High School and that person used to go to the different, uh, I used to go there and, and offer some kinda, uh, informational, based on my work, I used to go there, offer information sessions. Um, and it was only one person. Now we have different, different, um, parent liaisons in different schools. And that's also that we can use them to communicate with the parents and figure out what, how we can connect them with the, the parents engaged in the community. It's, it's like a, it's a community work, all together.
Yes.
Everybody, it's not only the parent responsibility, it's everybody.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate your answer and once again, thank you.
Okay, I guess the last question. Thank you, Lucia, and I appreciate you, uh, coming out here tonight and entering your, presenting your letter of interest. My question is not gonna be geared towards, uh, School Committee or your work on the School Committee or plans because you do have that relative experience. And, um, the questions have been answered tonight and, um, based on your background, we kinda know what you, kinda work you do. So it's not relative to that. My particular question is more, um, related to the election itself. Unlike the other two candidates here that we previously spoke to, neither one of them have ever run for office. By my count, you've had eight different elections in your background. You've, you've run eight campaigns at least. When the situation arose for this particular district and we knew that what was going on with the previous member, um, I remember having a conversation with you, um, in Chelsea Square and suggesting that you should run because of the candidate, you know, living in the district and it would be, I think, nice to have someone who has the experience and we can try to get out of the black cloud that we currently had over us. I'm, I remember mentioning, you know, particular members of that district, constituents that maybe you should be contacting in order to push your name through and so forth. I was quite surprised that when the election results came in, that you only got one vote. So, I personally, there were two other candidates in that same election that ran writing campaigns, current City, I mean, School Committee person, Naomi Zabat. Current city, I mean, school committee person Naomi Zabat and Jacqueline Fuentes. Ms. Jacqueline Fuentes who had zero experience, none whatsoever and did a last minute campaign, got 25 votes and yet from an individual who had experience, received one. So, I need to ask this question. How does that reflection of that, how does that election result that you had the same time as some of these other writing candidates, experience in running campaigns, managed to only get one vote? And how do I not take that as possibly a lack of effort on your part to get elected by write-in possibility? And instead, we now face the situation of taking it because I, you know, the question of interest by all these other candidates was raised because they didn't pull papers. You are uniquely, I don't know why to say qualified, but you are unique in your situation that you had all that experience yet in an open time could not share. And so, I need to explain, can you explain to me, other than my perception that you didn't put forth the effort in the election to get elected, but then that's how you got one vote or is there something else that I'm missing here?
Okay, thank you, yeah. Is that, you're done?
Yeah.
Okay. I, I got 17 votes and, and I did my, my, my work. I spent, I spent my, my, my own money doing flyers and going around door knocking, giving the, the stickers that I did on my own, I did the stickers and I was really surprised, frustrated. It made me, it was like for me, it was like a slap on the face with, with those votes that I got. And when I was at the Williams School giving the, the stickers and people were telling me, they still, they still, they don't believe, people didn't vote for me because they were, they were challenged the decision that I was made against this, this person. So, it means that they didn't believe that what was going on was true. He was like a really a decent person, it is a decent person. He's not really going to, he hasn't been going to court, like I said, that he's guilty, but really made me angry to see people talking to people there that I mentioned this to some of the members, telling me in my face, he didn't do it, he's a decent man and they vote for him. They vote for him and that made me really mad because I had given a lot to this community. I had made my effort to go door knocking. I sent tons of, like a 300 letters. I spent that, that money to send those letter and made those copy and to get what I got, that's really embarrassed for me. I, I was like a really embarrassed and angry. And then, that was the reason that I said, I'm not getting involved anymore with, 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 with the, with the city. I get like a really angry, like in a way, I got angry and I said, how can these people do this to them? Because it's not they're doing it to me, they're doing it to them. They vote for the, for the person and, and they didn't vote for me because, I don't know, I don't know. And then if I'm here today, it's because also it made me angry that we talk about civic participation. We talk a lot in the community. I did talk to people trying to enroll them, bengate and voter registration, telling people go to vote. They don't really, people are apathetic to go to vote and we saw that at this, this election, not everybody went to vote. So, if I'm here, if I'm back, it's because I care about the, the students and I care about this community. Whatever the ones that they didn't vote for me because I was near that district, it's their loss, it's not my loss. So, I did by par. So, that's what it is. It is what it is.
Thank you. I appreciate the response. I know it was a tough question and you, you put my mind at ease basically because again, it was, it was, it was, we just saw the results, but we didn't see the backstory and I appreciate you sharing that story. Counselor Bido?
You know, we can question the electorate all we want. I still bang my head against the wall on how an accused pedophile could get as many votes as they got. Unfortunately, like sometimes there's just no method, there's no way to understand this stuff. But, I mean, I know that, I know that I received a letter, I know that there was people that I know that wrote her name in and you said she only got one vote, but I heard she, she said she had 17. So, I, 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 I don't know. But, all of it is just really scary to be honest with you and I just had to say that out loud because the issue here is not, you know, her. The issue is a lack of civic engagement, us not educating the electorate and an accused pedophile getting as many votes as they got. Like let's be real, that's the issue. And I'm not, it's not against you, I'm just saying in general, the electorate just puzzles me and it infuriates me as well. So, I'll stop now. Thank you.
Counsel Robinson?
Follow up on that. I think the fact of the matter is she would have still been on the school committee if she did not move out of her district. So, going to a new district, she was, she was at a disadvantage in regards to what the timeframe is. So, you know, I admire the fact that you even wanted to come out to get back onto the school committee and I thank you for that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, we have, we're going to be closing the interview process. Thank you Ms. Enriquez for your time.
Thank you.
So, I will open it up to discussion. Next would be to take a vote, but do we want to, the question I have with the chairperson for school committee is, do we want to bring both in, back in front of us to do the role or should we ask Ms. Enriquez to leave and then take the vote and then call back the person who gets elected? Because Ms. Kovas was different, so I don't know if we want to have both of them here or, you know, and, and, because again, we're going to have someone who's going to lose and whether or not we want to have that exposure, you know, the, again, whoever doesn't get chosen still has to have their face, you know, usually, so I would ask, yes, sure.
It's an open meeting, everybody. You have to do the vote out in open, they have the choice if they want to be here or not.
No, I wasn't saying behind closed doors. You're absolutely right whether or not they want to see it on video, they will see all of this on TV. The question was, I didn't know procedurally wise, do we want to have both candidates and call Ms. Cabral back into the room and take the vote? So, I take it that we're going to? Okay, there we go. So, is there a second?
A second.
Second. We're going to invite both candidates back to vote. Roberto, do you have a question?
I was just wondering, is there, is it just a vote? Is there discussion? How does this proceed?
We can have a discussion. We, what, at this time, the next, like we do in our election of our president and different chairs, someone will make a motion for a candidate, it will be seconded and then the party, the individuals of the committee can speak on behalf of the individual and say what they have to say about what direction they may have, but that's normally the process. So, at this time, I'll, the floor is open for nominations to fill District Five.
I think that's not the process. I think the process is we have both candidates, we invite both candidates and to interview them as they are concerned and they are interested and then to vote.
We need a motion. No, we have not. Correct. So, I'm looking for a motion from anyone for a nomination of either of the candidates.
I move to open the floor for nomination.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm just sorry. Both candidates are already nominated.
No, they're not. We had an interview process, Mr. Counsel Brown. Is there a nomination? School committee, Jeanette Velez.
I nominate Lucia Enriquez.
Lucia Enriquez. Is there a second? Second. I nominate Ms. Kathy. Nominations are still open.
I nominate Catherine Cabal.
Kathy Cabral. I will second. Do we have any discussion? Counsel Bido?
Thank you. I just really just want to commend both of you. This is a very, very tough decision. It's like, you know, as a seasoned counselor, if I saw a young person come in this door, I'm out. Take it, please. So, I commend you for still having fight in you after so many years. I just want to thank you both for the work that you do in this community and I know that it won't end following whatever the results are here. Our community is better because of leaders like you and I just really, just from the bottom of my heart, thank you, thank you, thank you for even being willing to be here at nine o'clock at night on a Monday evening.
Anyone else? Any other comment? Counsel Brown?
Thanks. I just, I nominated Mrs. Cabal because I wanted her, she's came here today, we asked her if she was interested to submit a letter of interest. She did, she came in, she did what we asked her to do, she answered the questions and if no one would have nominated, I would have just felt like it was not only a waste of her time, but it was a waste of our time. So, I think that we, as Counsel has stated, we have two candidates. We have one with a world of experience that we've worked with and know what she can do and, you know, unfortunately, she had to answer a lot of questions that she's probably already have been through with the city of school committee members, but it's just unfair that we get up here and we, we throw all these questions and then at the end of the day, that we have to nominate one. We have two candidates here, I think we should move for a vote and just vote up like we voted on the first person. Thank you.
School committee president Kelly Garcia and then Counselor Roberto Jimenez. I'm sorry, school committee person, Counselor Jimenez.
To Kathy and Lucia, thank you so much for continuing to show your efforts. Lucia, you've been in the game for a long time. You're a Chelsea resident, you've been here for so long. Thank you for your endless commitment to our city. To Kathy, thank you for your commitment to our students as an educator and educator of color. I know it's not an easy feat and so thank you both for your continued commitment to the city, to the students of Chelsea and to civic duty. This decision will be a difficult one, so thank you for hanging on and I trust my colleagues both in elected, in the elected bodies to choose who we, who are our heart desires. So, thank you.
Counsel, I'm sorry, nope. Jimenez, please.
Thank you. Just want to say thank you to both of you, you know, having, having known the both of you for, for a little bit of time, I, I know the quality of person that you both are and the, the quality of the work that you both do and, you know, multiple people have said this already, it's going to be a very difficult vote and I just want to say that I look forward to continuing to work with both of you regardless of the outcome of this vote. Like has been mentioned many times today, civic engagement in this community is still low. We have a lot of work to do and whether you are an elected official or not, you are still a leader in this community and, and that work, you can be a bad leader and be an elected official. You can be an excellent leader in this community and not be an elected official. So, I just want to lift that up and, and look forward to continuing to work with both of you. Thank you.
Counsel Robinson?
I would like to also thank both candidates and it's not going to be a very easy decision to make, but, you know, it's our duty to make the hard choices and choices that we have to live with moving forward. But, I want to thank you both for taking the time to come here and present your case to this council and school committee members.
Counsel Vega Maldonado?
I just want to say thank you and echo what my peers have stated already. I know that this is by far one of the hardest decisions that I have to make as a city council member, knowing Lucia and Kathy, Kathy, pardon, and I'm just very, you know, this is going to be a hard one for sure, but I am pleased to know that you guys are so committed to our community and invested that I know that this is not the end all. Thank you so much for your time here and your years and, and just commitment to Chelsea as.
I'll make just one last comment and, thank you. You always like to, you always like to cut the mic off for me. I just want to echo again, many of the things, thank you for both candidates, the years of service and also the interest from, I think, a young new leader in this community. What Damali said earlier, I concur wholeheartedly about wishing, you know, that you could come out here and you said something earlier when you were talking about class size, I wish there were, you know, duplicate yourself in 10. I wish there were 10 of you so that we would, you know, maybe we need to find the other nine because I'm sure they're out there and, you know, and say, look, you know, get some young blood and so forth. So, with that being said, we'll close the discussion and then ask the clerk to call a roll.
School committee members.
Oh, let me remind everyone, simply say the last name, you can state Enriquez or Cabral to, for the vote intention.
School committee members, absent, school committee member Reagan.
Enriquez.
Enriquez.
Did you say Hernandez?
School committee.
Enriquez, yes.
Hernandez?
No.
Enriquez.
Enriquez.
School committee member Zabat?
Cabral.
Cabral. School committee member Garcia?
Present.
Present.
Present. School committee member Velez?
Ms. Enriquez.
Enriquez.
And school committee member Jimenez Rivera?
Ms. Cabral.
Cabral.
Counsel Cooper was absent, Counselor T. Garcia?
Cabral.
Cabral.
Counsel Robinson?
Enriquez.
Counselor Taylor?
Enriquez.
Counsel Lopez absent, Counselor Vega Maldonado?
Cabral.
Cabral.
Counsel Azaneda?
Cabral.
Counsel Brown?
Cabral.
Counsel Bido?
It's all on you.
Cabral.
Cabral.
And Counselor De Jesus?
Cabral.
Cabal?
Cabral.
Okay. Cabal has one, two, three, four, five, six.
Eight.
Seven, eight. Eight for Cabral.
Eight for Cabral.
And Enriquez has, what are?
Five.
Enriquez has one, two, three, four, five.
Five for Enriquez.
Right.
And one present.
Right.
Showed by the newly appointed school committee member for District Five is Kathy Cabral.
Now, they'll have to be sworn in by Jeanette.
Again, to the, to Ms. Cabral, as I mentioned to the earlier, the next step in the process to have a satisfactory query check and, and then you will be sworn in and be contacted by the other members of the school committee. I want to thank everyone for joining us tonight. I want to thank everyone for joining us tonight. I know it was a difficult decision, um, but, uh, the plot has played out and I hope that, uh, we will not see the last of everyone that we see tonight. Thank you.